This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. We're very pleased to be here hosting this session for the Edmonton Arts and Festivals community to touch base with our city's councillors and mayor. Thank you so much for joining us. I sincerely hope you are all safe and healthy. I see there are still some folks that are joining us, and I'm going to just give another minute to have the last stragglers come in, and then we will get started. Okay, I'm going to start with some opening remarks. My name is Stephen Williams. I am the Grants Director at the Edmonton Arts Council, and I'll be moderating the event today. We have been planned to be joined today by city councillors, including Sarah Hamilton and Ben Henderson. I see councillor Henderson is here. The mayor is also going to be joining us very shortly. He's just finishing a national call with other city mayors and will be able to join us for part of this meeting. This is the first of two sessions. The other is on Monday with a different group of attendees and speakers. Today's session includes an ASL interpreter, and most of you will be able to see her on your screen now and potentially adjust your screen so that she's visible at all times. Both sessions are being recorded to be available later with closed captioning, so we can be as accessible as possible. We're expecting around 50 people today, and you'll notice that you are muted, and we'd ask you to stay muted so that we can keep the volume levels down. Momentarily, I'm going to ask Sanjay Shahani and the councillors who are in attendance to offer some opening remarks, and then we have invited three members of our community to offer their perspective on the current situation and potential futures. Tim Yakimak will be joining us from Edmonton Opera, Amber Rook from the Works Art and Design Festival, and Becca Taylor from the Otsitewan Contemporary Artist Collective will each speak for a few minutes, which will lead into our discussion portion of the meeting. If you have a topic for the discussion, please do use the chat function in the go-to meeting. The EAC staff will be watching the chat, and we'll do our best to identify topics and questions to insert into the conversation. The mayor will be joining us shortly, but he does also need to leave a little bit early to prepare for a news conference that is happening shortly after this, so the councillors in attendance will have a chance to discuss and close this meeting. So just before we start, I'd like to remind everybody that our crystal balls are all a bit cloudy these days, and we recognize that no one has all the answers and may not even know all the questions, such that the situation is constantly evolving. Therefore, I will encourage us to be gentle with each other in this meeting and hopefully in our lives in general. So with that, I'm going to invite Sanjay to unmute himself and offer some opening remarks.
Thank you, Stephen, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking some time to have this discussion. I want to start off by actually acknowledging, you know, the time and the commitment that city council has shown in all of you, and they've shown it in a few ways. So one of the first things that they've done in the recent, in the past couple of years is that they approved Connections and Exchanges, which is Edmonton's 10-year arts and heritage plan. It's also a city plan, which the EAC will be using to ensure that we have a healthy, vibrant, and vital art sector. This plan was approved in October 2018. It received unanimous approval from all 12 councillors and the mayor. And, you know, we have been working diligently with you to make sure that we can begin to realize the promise of this plan. Of course, nobody expected the current situation to erupt, you know, in the implementation of this plan. We have been hearing at the EAC all the difficulties and all the troubles that all of you have, regardless of artistic discipline. And so one of the ways that we wanted to make sure that your concerns and your, you know, and your questions had a way to reach the mayor and council. And so this meeting and the meeting on Monday is, has been organized to ensure that there is a direct communication between our arts community and council. And I would encourage you to think of this as a conversation, but it's more like a check-in. And I think the situation that we are in demands that we are, as Stephen reminded us, you know, sort of demands that we are gentle with each other, but we're also mindful that, you know, that there are no easy solutions to the situation that we're in. I want to actually thank the mayor, who will be joining us sort of momentarily at any point soon, and councillors Hamilton and Henderson, who have shown great deal of generosity and openness in appearing at both these sessions. So without much ado, I want to now hand over the, you know, the platform to, I believe councillor Henderson is with us, and I would like, I would like to hand it over to councillor Henderson, and we can, after remarks from councillor Henderson and councillor Hamilton, we can then, you know, kick off the meeting. Thank you so much.
Yeah, welcome, everybody. Maybe I'll jump in. I don't, Sarah, unless, I mean, we fortunately have sort of an idea of the notes on behalf of the mayor that he wanted to make, so I think probably I will do those, and then maybe Sarah and I can add our own thoughts, but I'll go through his first because I think that's, that's the most important thing. So on his behalf, thanks for joining us today. We know that the pandemic has had a significant impact on the arts community, and that's why the mayor and councillor Hamilton and myself are joining you today. We want you to know the city council supports the arts community. We value what you do for our city and our quality of life. You're the reason the city of Edmonton has invested millions of dollars in programming, grants, and public art through the Edmonton Arts Council over the years, and will continue to do so. Like other Edmonton's, we are proud of being a festival city, and it will be hard on us not to be able to enjoy the festivals and events, programming, all the work we know and love this summer. We know that times are particularly tough for people right now and want to encourage you to focus on the creative work you do that makes our city so vibrant. We know that our city will pull together to support the arts and community, arts community and the artists. We're already seeing that support from people who watch the online concerts and plays and take virtual music and painting classes. We see it in the people who have chosen to donate their tickets back to organizations instead of getting refunds. We see support from the people who continue to buy paintings, music, and other works of arts from local artists, creators, and galleries, because that's what Edmontonians do. We are and always have been a big city with a small-town community spirit. We're a city of volunteers and neighbors who are there for each other, and this pandemic won't change our spirits, and it won't change our love for the arts. So city councillor, Sanjay was mentioning, has a vision for the long-term vitality of the arts and heritage in our community. It was a vision that was created by all of you and completely supported by us, and that's, that is the vision that's embodied in Connections and Exchanges. That is the city's 10-year plan to transform arts and heritage. City council is committed to you, the arts community, and we're committed to you in the long term through Connections and Exchanges and all of that work. I know from my time on the Arts Council Board is continuing. We value what we give to our city through your creativity and your craft. We are continuing to work with the Edmonton Arts Council, the Edmonton Heritage Council, and the Arts Habitat Edmonton to implement Connections and Exchanges. And one of the aims of Connections and Exchanges focuses on the economic resiliency of arts and heritage practitioners, and I'm pleased that the Edmonton Arts Council, or we're pleased that the Edmonton Arts Council and other organizations in our city responded to our current situation and providing support to help artists and organizations through this difficult time, because that's what Edmontonians do. Remember that we're in this together, and we're really looking forward to hearing from you to get a better sense of some of the specifics of your situation so that we can understand both how to get ourselves through the current circumstances, but also how we can move forward and bounce back, as I'm sure we will. So those are, in part, some of the comments from me added on to the comments from the mayor, Sarah. Do you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say that, you know, throughout the last two months, I've personally seen the arts community pivot and adapt in ways that I know weren't necessarily economically beneficial to any one of you, but did help raise the spirits of this community. And, you know, I just want to thank those of you who are able to do that, and I'm really looking forward to hearing from many of you in terms of, you know, where you are right now, the challenges you're facing, and where you think we might go with this. So thanks for those words, Ben.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe just in closing for now, I would add that, I mean, I think I've had a chance to talk to some of you. I know what's, we've been in close contact through the Arts Council Board with what's happening as well. I know many of you. I don't know all of you, but I actually think I do look at the people on here. I do know most of you. I can guess, I think, at what some of you are going through, and others I have less feel for. So I think this is a really good chance for us to get an idea of exactly where you're at, what the challenges are, so that we can keep that in mind for the future. So that having been said, I will shut up, and we can go back. I think, Stephen, it's back to you.
Thanks very much, councillors. Much appreciated. So on our list of speakers today, first up would be Tim Yakimak from the Opera. If you could make sure that you're unmuted and your camera is on so everybody can see you, that would be great, and take it away, Tim.
Great, well, thanks, Stephen, and hello, everyone. Great to see all your familiar faces. Very comforting to see you there. From our point of view at the Edmonton Opera, just, I guess, we consider one of the larger arts organizations, and I'm sure we're going through a lot of the same issues and challenges every level of arts group is going through. We just happen to be a larger budget, that's all. Our margins are just as slim in terms of profit and loss, and it is a business, but I like to think of it, it's driven by the artists and the people we employ. The bulk of our expenses are on salaries, and that's what just, that's the frustrating and the most challenge for our organizations is how to basically maintain ourselves to allow a future to engage all those people we employ throughout the year. So immediate concerns was we were just about to launch the production of Candide at our final dress rehearsal, and then the provincial authorities, two hours later, announced basically the inability to assemble. So we had to cancel the performance. So obviously, the first, all the expenses upfront, a project of that size, were spent. We did honor our artist contracts, and the work with symphony did, we paid that out. So it did leave us with a deficit in that sense. Luckily, we quickly put into action whether people could donate their ticket value, use a credit for future or refund. So thankfully, a lot of people donated the ticket values. We're very grateful for that. Obviously, if we have credits, it becomes a future liability, and then we did have quite a bit, quite a bit of refunding, but not as bad as I thought it would be, so that was good. But the immediate action was to just maintain cash so that we could basically keep the company afloat. We went back to look at the budgets to the end of the year, and I think we'll be, we'll be fine. We reworked the budget for next season and reduced almost by half in terms of revenues and expenses, so it will really affect our ability to produce in the coming season. We are thinking that we may have to just postpone that season to be starting after Christmas, with hopes that we'll be able to do something. But again, my dark heart probably tells me it's not going to be possible. Everything I'm hearing from all sources around the world, it, the worst-case scenario could be a reality. But in the meantime, we're working with the after-Christmas scenario, and to make that happen, we will be reducing staff hours. Current, we're at four days a week, taking advantage of the wage subsidy programs that are in effect, as long as that can happen. Once those end, it's another pivot to see what we have to do. That's my biggest aim right now is to keep staff, because without them, we aren't able to pivot to what we need. I need all those people to rethink and restructure if we have to. It's, it's not done in isolation with each worker. We need to be together to figure this out and to be nimble. It's hard for a big company like the Opera to be nimble, since I said the word, but we are trying to be as nimble as we can. For anything we change, I've got all these artists that are contracted for next season and start, have to juggle things. It's a big, complicated puzzle, and it is a liability as well. We all work on subscription models, so we're already using revenue brought in this for next year, already this year, and across the sector, even the biggest opera companies, I'm in contact with them all, they're all on the same model. So it's a big liability that we're, we're behind the eight ball. We don't have those reserves in place, and we try not to run a deficit budget. What else? We are, work with so many different unions. We still don't know the true impact of the social distancing in our, we offered the Jubilee. I just don't think we can financially make it work if we have to have people every second row and three seats apart. We'd be down to 500 people in a 2,500-seat venue. We just can't maintain that, so we do need support should that long-term reality exist. Also, the, the health authorities are the ones that we have to listen to the provincial regulations. We have equity that the actors getting together, how close can they be to produce the symphony in a pit? It's just not feasible at this time to bring those kinds of performers together to do that. So it's, we're just waiting week, month by month, to, to hear what we're allowed to do. The digital dissemination of product, it's, in the short term, we're doing as much as we can with local. We again have a lot of unions to, if we want to stream our productions or archives, a lot of hurdles with unions, and we have to negotiate what that looks like, and it's going to be a hard negotiation. We're also competing against, in our sector, the Met has all this offer-on-demand. It's free now through the CBC. We talked to CBC, they, they have the whole catalog, they have the whole catalog from Europe. We can't compete with that, that quality of production that they've actually put money into. So we're doing our best, but I think our patrons will respond accordingly, but I think it gets tired very quickly in terms of delivering what we require the in-person assembly to really do our best work. I always think of this, if any opportunities, I guess we have to look at this as how, what are we going to be like once we consider what that new normal is? That new normal might be a lot smaller than we exist right now. We're all, society learning to do with a lot less, and that might be the new normal, that we don't have to expect to have the big, grand offer every time we're out. Maybe it's the smaller things, combination with occasional larger productions, but it's a, it's an opportunity to rethink and readjust what we are and what we deliver.
Tim, I was going to urge you to wrap up.
That's, I think that's about it. I'm just looking at my notes and kind of touched a bit on all of them, but thanks. And I'm, I know that a lot of you share those concerns.
Stephen, can I ask a quick question?
By all means.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious, is one of the things I hadn't thought of, Tim, you were just in the middle of doing your resubscription campaign, so what effect has that had on you?
Well, we're still selling subscriptions. We're not doing too badly, actually. I think people have optimism, and the longtime supporters obviously are still supporting. I will probably see probably about a 40% reduction from where we should be.
Great, thanks. That's helpful.
All right, before we move on to, to our next speaker from the community, I do want to recognize that Mayor Iverson has joined us, and we are very grateful for you taking the time out of your busy day, sir, for joining us. Your council colleagues have done an admirable job of opening the meeting. Unless we would like to say a word or two at this point?
Away to the end.
Very well. So next on our, on our schedule of speakers was Amber Rook from the Works Festival. Amber, can you make sure that your camera and microphone are on?
I think they are.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Excellent. So yeah, thanks, everybody, for taking the time to hear from us today and learn about the challenges that our community is facing right now. For the works part today is May the first. May the first is the day that we would normally be welcoming up to 20 new student interns to their summer jobs. They'd be learning about production, curation, and marketing of visual arts exhibits, and also about public outdoor presentation. We would be actively constructing materials for about 25 exhibits and installations and learning about 20 more that our partner artist-run centers and galleries are producing. We would be putting the final touches on an extensive marketing campaign and coordinating the logistics of bringing 50 contractors, 30 vendors, 80 musical performances, and hundreds of special events and engagement activities through a space, in this case, generally preparing to welcome 300,000 Edmontonians back to Churchill Square after a two-year hiatus. We're looking forward to that. In its 35th year, the Works was set to partner on outreach programs for TD Edmonton International Jazz Festival, Festival Edmonton Champs, and also with the organizers of Edmonton's World Refugee Day. We were to present programming for National Indigenous Peoples' Day, Saint-Jean-Baptiste, Canadian Multiculturalism Day, and of course, July 1st Canada Day. Of course, none of that is happening. The festival is canceled, and so instead, as May drew nearer, we spent our time in communications overdrive. We suspended our education programs, canceled presentations, let suppliers know that their services will not be contracted this year, that services like cleaners, plumbers, electricians, equipment suppliers, staging, fences, radios, scaffolds, lumber, paint, and tents, it's really quite far-reaching. And we worked with our sponsors to ensure or check in that we would have some continuity and mutual benefit despite the cancellation. We notified our presenting artists, our vendors, our business partners, that they will not have the presentation opportunities, the sales opportunities, and the new audience development opportunities that they counted on for June. This is craft and art vendors, as well as collectives, like the Indigenous Artists Market Collective, and of course, restaurants, food trucks, and a lot of adjacent downtown businesses as well. Our small year-round team has been working to adapt and adapting to working with spotty cloud file access, with inconsistent video conferencing from our homes, we're taking turns visiting the office, taking a lot of care to clean things, all this stuff that we are not used to. It's a big mental shift. We've been completely reconceiving springtime. We've had some very stressful meetings as we reforecast our year with as much as half of the revenue disappearing, and we've had some hopeful meetings as well, as we task ourselves with moving forward with meaningful presentations later in the year. We've had to consider, on one hand, what are the cultural needs of a population processing trauma and in some stage of prolonged isolation and grief? How can a festival adapt to meet those needs? How can we engage our audiences and uplift our partners? On the other hand, though, how resilient are we really as an organization? What if these measures are in place through another season? How will people feel about gathering when they're lifted? Which of these adaptations are stopgaps, and what are we going to have to change for the foreseeable future? Well, we want to imagine that we'll be able to prioritize making space for the new creative and generative connection point between artists and audience. I think that's what we do as a festival, as well as provide meaningful education opportunities for the next generation of cultural workers, and that we'll continue to be able to bring communities together through art. We want to imagine that through collaboration and as well as focus on relationship, which is the real opportunity this year, that we'll continue to meet those cultural needs and provide relevant experiences, as well as support the very basic needs of a community of creatives that count on presenters like the Works that are incoming their livelihood. We're still really figuring out what that means for our presentation. Not everything adapts well to online. We are ready to launch an engagement and consultation plan for our artists, partners, and stakeholders to determine where our priorities and values align, what we can do to adapt together. We're looking forward to receiving our student, student summer employment funding, and we do intend to engage those, those youth on a new timeline. We're thinking maybe sometime between mid-July and November, depending on a lot of things, that there will be something happening. And we are assuming right now that there will be a festival in 2021, and with that, we need to assume, of course, that our government funders continue to see themselves as long-term partners in creating that celebration, that vibrancy, these, these connection opportunities. We are, of course, anticipating that private spending will tighten up for a while in response to the economic after effects of the pandemic, and the worst thing, of course, that could happen is if public funding and support shrink at the same time. So I really do appreciate your stated commitment to, to be there, to continue to invest and to be a stabilizing force to some degree. I know you don't know what's going to happen anymore than we do, but as we look to recovery, this is a group that needs to continue to be thought of, because it is a group of businesses and entrepreneurs that bring enormous value to living in Edmonton, and frankly, they do it on what is not very stable ground as it is.
Thank you, Amber. Were there questions?
Yeah, just a quick one, because I know you're in an interesting, different situation, Amber, in that, in that you're, you know, your reliance, your earned revenue, your relationship with the earned revenue is different, but your relationship with the sponsorship is, is major. So what do you think, you know, what's happening with your sponsors this year, and what do you think will happen in the future?
That's a really tough call.
Are they staying with you this year, or are they, or are they pulling your sponsorships for this year?
We haven't had sponsorship pulled, but it is suspended for this year and continued next year sort of thing. Everything is case by case. Over the last year, I think we've already started to see people getting a little bit, a little bit more careful with their spending, so we anticipate that that will continue.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Stephen.
And Amber, I just want to, I want to offer a brief comment that, thank you for bringing the perspective of your festival. There are a bunch of other festivals that are, that are represented on this call and, and on Monday as well, and I think we all just need to recognize that the, the various festivals all work in, in different sort of business models and structures. Are you in contact with them, and are you all sharing this kind of information aside from this meeting?
Yeah, the festival consortium continues to meet, and there are a few
Yeah, the festival consortium continues to meet and there are a few folks that have certainly been in touch in leading up to everybody figuring out how and when and if to to cancel or adapt. You're absolutely right. Everybody does have slightly different business concerns, slightly different models to to consider. And and for sure, where there is an opportunity to move forward together, we're looking for those opportunities as well.
Thank you. And just before I call on Becca to take her turn to present, I will remind that we're we're going to go into a bit of question and answer here shortly. And I would encourage anybody who wants to put a topic in the chat function to do that so that we can start thinking about what topics are at the top of people's minds. Becca Taylor from the Otsitjwan Contemporary Artist Collective. Could you be so kind?
Hi, hi, everyone. Thanks so much for organizing this call. I really appreciate having the opportunity to talk a bit about what we're going through. So during when this all we started practicing social distance here, we Otsitjwan Contemporary Art Collective was actually preparing to open up our contemporary art center on March twenty-eighth, which we had to cancel in light of all this. And we kind of took some time afterwards to just really sit with the news and everything that was happening and kind of try to figure out what our next steps were. So alongside our opening, we were planning on also launching a large fundraiser, you know, where this is our first time having an art center. There's a lot of costs that are coming at us now that we were unexpected costs that we now have to maintain without having our projected additional revenues of rentals and everything if with having this new building. The as for the exhibition, we honored our commitments and paid for the artists. And I have to echo what some of the other speakers have said where, you know, there was loss within that as well, you know, we've we honored our commitments. We had a lot of non-refundable expenses for our grand opening and it kind of changed the scope in the way that we're going to be able to present this project in the future. And what how we're going to be able to roll this out. Currently, we are moving the exhibition online and we are looking at alternative platforms because we are anticipating that we're not going to be able to open up the space the way we envisioned. Until we're projecting twenty twenty-one at this time, I mean, we do recognize it really is week to week, day by day and how things move forward. But we're just right now trying to focus on how to keep our employees employed because it is really important that we have them working with us as we move forward because this is a very transition time for us. You know, as we move from a collective model into running a nonprofit and art gallery, we have a lot of things that we need to be working through and we're in a transition period, which actually means we're not eligible for any of the federal wage subsidy programs at this point for our employees. So a lot of it is we're just having to rework our budgets, work with funders in order to make sure that we can continue employing people, continue moving forward and try to record our losses as much as we can during this time as we also shift into core funding with a lot of the funder bodies in this does kind of affect the way our fiscal year is going to look and potentially the results of what these grants are going to look like for future revenue. So yeah, like I said, as we move forward right now, at this point, we're just trying to think about best practices. I know there has been that projected date of May fourteenth for opening up art galleries and museums again. But at this point, we just want to really take our time and sit with this and decide what is the best practice to move forward? What does this look like for our organization and what's the best practice to keeping our community members and artists safe at this time?
Thank you, Becca. I appreciate your perspective. Counselor Henderson has turned his microphone.
Sorry, I'm just going to interrupt one more time because, Becca, my memory is you're in a city-owned building, you're not?
We are, yeah.
Yeah. So is it the ongoing operating costs? I mean, so, I mean, I I don't know what that relationship is like with the city right now in terms of, I think we have a lot of a lot of nonprofits in some of those situations that are in our buildings. But you also then, or is it your business case about paying back the the money and covering the money to do the renovations? Is that part of the challenge or is there are there ongoing costs of the bill, you know, in terms of lease and and cost of running the building right now that we're also part of what you're struggling with?
Yeah, I mean, the we were supposed to be taking over all the utility costs of the building at this point. We're still in conversation with the city about what that looks like long term for us. But this also kind of just impacts like in the future for twenty twenty-one, there's a lot of grants that we'd be able to apply for. That kind of helped us cover some of these building costs that now we don't have, we won't have numbers for quite the same way in the future. So for us, there's just right now, we're fine. But come twenty twenty-one, because there's a lot of grants that we were moving in the direction to apply for that we're now starting to not be eligible for.
Right, okay. Okay, that's, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. There's there is one question that has appeared in the in the chat, which I'll just read in case you can't see it. From the Copecelli Choir's representative is asking a question about that the EAC has committed to assuring everybody that COVID-related cancellations and changes won't impact our relationships for this year for twenty twenty. And as a reminder, the EAC does work on the city's annual cycle, which is a January first to December thirty-first twenty twenty. And the question is whether we've given any thought to what operating funding might look like in twenty twenty-one, depending on what the curtailments and future looks like. I will take a moment to address that briefly, that certainly we have been thinking about that actively. With the guidance of the Connections and Exchanges Plan, we were in the process of talking about how our relationships with organizations would evolve in twenty twenty-one in any case. Now, what that actually is going to look like, I mean, I think I said earlier that my crystal ball is just as cloudy as everybody else's. And but I think we are committed to having that ongoing relationship with these organizations and being as thoughtful about those reactions as we can possibly be. So that's the top level answer to that question. I'm going to quickly suggest that I pause there because I understand that the mayor would like to say a few words. And then he needs to run to his news preparation for his news conference shortly. So, Mr. Mayor, be so kind.
Can you turn your volume down? And of course, just as Stephen says that, I take a big bite of my carrot at lunch because I'm multitasking here. But I really appreciate the chance to say a few words and I'll stay on for as long as possible. And and I've appreciated hearing about what your individual organizations and and festivals and programs are experiencing in this. It's it's not been lost on me that there are far-reaching implications to our culture and heritage community and and to artists themselves, as well as people who depend on on these industries for employment. And so to the extent that Sarah, being a musician and a and a teacher, has been impacted. And so as CFO of her small business, I've been dealing with the impact of of change the arts business just just in our household. But, you know, some of you know, my dad was a sculptor for a long time, and so I grew up around mostly the visual arts, but also theater too. And so knowing lots of people in the business, you know, from family and and then and then from this work. I've really been impressed with the resiliency and creativity and adaptability of the the community in dealing with this. And and your organizations have had to make some of the same kinds of really difficult decisions that our organization has had to make, albeit at a different scale. I mean, we're down forty-one hundred employees at the city of Edmonton right now to manage costs and balance the budget. And and you may know some of those people. They may be in your households as well. So the the ripples of this are huge across all sectors. I I should I should say, and this is the call I was on before this and the call I have to go to next, is that municipalities have been left, quite frankly, in the in the lurch a little bit by provincial and federal governments because we're not eligible for a lot of the kinds of supports that that businesses and households and not-for-profit organizations have received. And so that's that's really compromised our financial position. To the extent, though, that anyone has suggested that we should cut our support to your sector, just to be really clear. You know, of the really difficult decisions we've had to make, particularly in in this week's budget, our our commitment to the sector and and the importance of your work and and the and the programs that you deliver for Edmontonians will absolutely need to be part of our city for the for the future and and also part of our recovery. I think there's going to be phenomenal pent-up demand against the tension of how are people going to go out? And so relaunch in in public transit and on the city's golf courses, which, of course, I'm now going to be under phenomenal pressure to open, even though we laid everyone off who mows the grass. So, you know, relaunch is going to be a bit tricky for all of us and look different for your different festivals, programs, and communities and venues. But but just know that that I'm really grateful to Sanjay and the whole team at the Arts Council for their constant engagement with you throughout this and their leadership and their adaptability and retooling funding to support you. I've been really impressed with their response. I'm grateful to my colleagues, Counselor Henderson and Counselor Hamilton, for being on the call and and kicking things off and continuing to work with many of you through this to answer your questions and ease your fears. Just a couple of other things to Cindy and Penelope, who are also supporting Stephen in running this call. Thank you for your efforts here today. And I'm across the table from Sanjay. That's why we had to get his his thing turned down. It's really nice to see human beings in through in three dimensions. So nice to see you, Sanjay. And thank you for your leadership. And thank all of you again for the remarkable work that you're doing. I I hear consistent themes about sustainability of your venues, reboot in twenty twenty-one. You know, a lot of the modeling that we're looking at internationally considers the possibility of, you know, one of the best articles around this is the hammer and the dance. If you just Google that, you get a sense of, you know, we've been in this not quite full lockdown, but significant constraint. And then now we're going to go into this period of easing and tightening and easing and tightening of restrictions to try to manage demand on the healthcare system. And that's going to actually maybe even be more uncertain and more challenging to work through over potentially eighteen months or longer till there's a vaccine or or herd immunity is developed. And so so that's that's making planning for us very difficult and planning very difficult for each of you. But but we're here to work together through that. So 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 I'm sorry, I can't give you certainty. I'm I'm becoming an armchair epidemiologist like many others, but I I don't have the magic answer. But I did hear some very hopeful news that some of the research at the University of Alberta, or at least what's left of the University of Alberta before this other thing hit, and then now because of this, that there's really phenomenal research happening there relative to therapies and and vaccines. And so perhaps Edmonton will have much to show from the rooftops when this thing is all over, but we'll need we'll need the arts to help tell the story too about how we how we thrived through this. And so just just thank you for your perseverance. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your leadership. And I'll stop there because I want to listen to more of what you have to say and I'll stay on for as long as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a few comments coming up in the chat. Just to go back to the first one, which was about what operating funding might look like in twenty twenty-one, I think perhaps Sanjay might have a little bit of redirect for that as well, if he wants to say anything about our our plans to reach out and talk to the arts community a little bit about how that's going to look.
Thanks, Stephen. The only thing I would like to say at this point, because we are in discussion with our board, is that we we have been working, as you know, towards revamping our operating funding programs. And we were on track to introducing a multi-year funding sort of format. We haven't as yet moved away from that thinking. We have heard a lot from you already as organizations through the online survey process. So we do have some information. We were about to launch the roundtables and now we have to reimagine how they've been launched the roundtables, which were which were live roundtables with all of you and with individual artists. But we are going ahead with that. It's just that the the pandemic response has accelerated certain other parts of our implementation strategy for connections and exchanges, some of which you've already seen. And, you know, Mayor Iverson mentioned we've already launched some some grant programs for individual artists and we've made some tweaks to project programs for organizations. And so I I think, you know, the assurance that I would like to give everyone is that the EAC continues to be permitted to organizations and and festivals through our operating program. And we will work directly with you to make sure that whatever changes and revisions we make will will have, you know, will have the full full consultation, full sort of feedback from all of you.
Thanks, Sanjay. The the other comments that have appeared in the chat include some suggestions about new ways of supporting audiences around ticket subsidies. I think those are fascinating questions that we should have a conversation about. The Maggie from Next Fest has asked an excellent question here about whether we have recovery plans begun. I wonder if I wonder if one of the counselors might be able to give us just a brief precis of the city's kind of do you have any ideas around around recovery steps in the near term that might impact how the Edmonton Arts Council and the arts community think about that and our relationship with the city and our community?
Maybe I'll jump in if that's okay. And then, Sir, I don't know if you want to. I I think part of part of the part of our struggle and our question right now is we just don't know the timing of it, right? We don't know how long we're in a position before things can go back to something like normal. So both for us and 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 for everybody else and what that transition will look like. So are we thinking about it? Absolutely. Do we have a roadmap? I don't think it'd be possible to create a roadmap right now. And it's why I think I'm really, you know, the thing that is most interesting to me to hear from all of you is, one, how do we make sure that we don't lose anybody along the way? But two, you know, what needs to happen long term to allow people to recover? And what does that recovery look like? So I think there's two pieces to the puzzle. There's the immediate one right now, which is how do we make sure that nobody goes down, either individuals or organizations? But then really understanding what the challenges are going to be to ramp back up, when we get to ramp back up. And I think without knowing the when is the real problem or what that ramp up will look like. Obviously, there's a vaccine. It's a very different kind of ramp up than if it's a more gradual process. And and that's just that's one of the big unknowns right now. But I think, you know, looking ahead and understanding how to keep people healthy enough that we can that we can then get back up and running is part of the questions that we need information on from you. So that would be my answer. I I don't think we can, you know, that this is an exercise in answering that question. I would say to some extent we begin to answer that question. Sarah?
Um, so it's worth mentioning at this point, this is fresh off the press. Yesterday, we, or I think it was two days ago then, we accepted. Normally, we have council initiatives, arts and culture being one of them. And we put those aside for the moment to start four new initiatives that are meant to kind of address some of these questions that you bring up, Maggie. And it's based on our four strategic goals, so healthy city environment, regional prosperity, and urban places, of which the arts fits, I think strategically in many of those. But the what we're working on as a council is, as we go towards a relaunch, then we can start talking about recovery and and ultimately reimagining what our city looks like in a post-COVID or paracoVID world. And if we we have a beautiful just circle because they call it a dial because we know that we could start to go into recovery, we could relaunch. because we know that we could start to go into recovery, we could relaunch some things and we might have to go back to where we are. So it allows us to be very nimble. I think that so much of that work will be informed by what we see organizations doing, how we see you all pivoting or reimagining the work that you're doing or are no longer able to do. So I think that at some point, we just launch them. So there will be an opportunity to intersect between administration, council and outside groups. Does anyone want to add anything on that?
Thank you, counselors. Mayor Iverson is giving us the thumbs up. We seem to all be getting good at our own version of visual communication over video chat. There's, there's a number of things coming up in the chat here. Our friend Jeff Collins, who was once upon a time, a few years ago, a artist in residence for the City of Edmonton, has asked about the city's policies around gifting art from local artists. I do believe those policies are in place. I don't have an immediate, an immediate way to update you on that, Jeff. But certainly through Ticks on the Square, which is also something that the Edmonton Arts Council runs. Christie from Arts on the Ave is interested in knowing about continuing engagement with the vulnerable neighbors in the revitalization zones. And I'm falling behind the questions. Adam from The Fringe is asking about any data from the Connections and Exchanges development process that could be shared to help strategize, help the community strategize. That is a fascinating question that I think Sanjay and I need to go and chat about. And maybe with our director of research, Andrew, as well, who's on this, on this call to see if there's anything from that process that might inform where we're going with that. Do any of those questions, oh, Mayor Iverson has his hand up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I think the Connections and Exchanges question is brilliant. And that, what Sarah was mentioning about our relaunch, recover, reimagine initiatives is that this whole crisis does give us the opportunity to think about what we might want to stand up differently in response. So the new normal is not the old normal and all of those things people are saying. But I, but we wanted to ground it very deliberately in the city's existing strategic plan because we learned a lot going into that. And obviously, we want to test a lot of those assumptions. So I think the same thing goes for something like Connections and Exchanges. But you don't want to start from a blank sheet of paper in your recovery. So that's, I really appreciate that, that question from Adam. And the network that informed that needs to be activated in planning a response for cultural institutions, just the same way the city needs to reengage with all of our networks to revalidate what we're doing. So that's what, that's why we've stood up the initiatives with counselors and we'll have external folks involved in them as well to look at those strategic questions. So I just, I'll leave that for Arts Council to take away and think about and engage on. But on Christie's question about revitalization zones, where we've used the arts as a revitalization mechanism, I think just to provide some reassurance that to the extent that those overlap business improvement areas all around the city, including and especially Alberta Avenue, but also even 124th, certainly downtown and also Old Strathcona, there are going to be a lot of things the city's going to be doing with our business improvement areas and specifically in the revitalization zones. And we've set aside about $10 million. So in addition to what we tried to do for business with the tax moves this week, which were not without some singeing for us here and there, there's an additional $10 million set aside in one-time dollars available to us for business support. And I'm going to take a flag for this, that the revitalization areas, that we think about arts as part of the business recovery for those areas in particular, where cultural industries are part of the makeup. So I really appreciate Christie flagging that. But I think we're, I think it's safe to say we're committed to the ongoing work in the revitalization zones and in the business improvement areas. And I know many of you work closely with Old Strathcona and Downtown Business Association and others. But as we work through them, as well as through the Arts Council, we want to see things land on the ground to support venues, public and private, and sort of cultural, which is a bit fuzzy. But, but we'll need your help in designing some of that. But our long-term commitment to those, to those cultural zones and business zones, which really are mutually dependent on each other, I think is only going to strengthen as a result of this. Just for reassurance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've really got time to just chat briefly about one more question that Jenna Stanton, our colleague from the Alberta Craft Council, has posed here about Calgary Arts Development's announcement recently that they are going to be engaging in a monthly survey of potential audience engagements and community engagements in the arts and whether the EAC will be collaborating in that work. I can report to all of you that Sanjay and I and our colleagues from Calgary Arts Development, the Canada Council and Canadian Heritage, and to some extent, the Alberta Foundation for the Arts as well, have been on weekly calls now for the last seven or eight weeks to share information and try and come to shared actions or shared understandings. Often, those shared understandings are different because we all live in different places and have different mandates. But certainly, KADA and the EAC have been discussing this. And how we go about that research is something we are in conversations with them about. The last question that I see there is about supporting research and information sharing on digital programming. Yes, as some of you know, we have been partnering with the Edmonton Community Foundation to pilot some digital art strategies. That's an excellent question about, about information sharing on digital programming. So I know that we are running quickly out of time here. I think I will close my portion before I invite counselors or Sanjay to say last words. I am really thinking about this not, this is the beginning of a conversation. Our meeting today is not intended to cover everybody's issues or everybody's challenges, but to make sure that we maintain this ongoing connection. And the EAC certainly will be playing a strong role in that. And we welcome the conversations with our community, with all of you. Sanjay, did you want to take 30 seconds to say one more thing before I throw it to counselors and mayor to wrap up?
No, thank you, Stephen. All I, all I want to say is that we will continue this dialogue. We have two sessions, one today and one on Monday. But I think, you know, this is, I think the mayor and both counselors in their remarks have commented on how useful this is. And so the EAC will continue to work with council and with administration to make sure that, that we keep you informed and at the same time have opportunities for you to be able to check in directly. So with that, that's what I would like to say.
And Counselor Henderson or Counselor Hamilton, last words to you?
Sure, maybe I'll just, just to reiterate to everybody, one of the things, you know, I'm spending an awful lot of time doing exactly this, sitting in front of my computer, talking to people. I feel like I don't move anymore. But one of the things I don't get to do anymore is, is get out to your events, be able to bump into you, to be able to talk to you, to find out what's going on. So this kind of thing is really useful. I think the priority has to be, one, making sure everybody is still standing and we get through it, A. And B, and I think this is why it was a really valuable question, understanding how we bounce back after this. And so please, please, please stay in touch. Don't be afraid to give us that information. We are still going strong, we're still working, but our ability to communicate is a bit different from the kind of informal ways we've been able to communicate in the past. So I'd really encourage you, as we go forward, you know, understanding those for me are the two, are the two real objectives. And that's why it was really valuable to hear your stories today and hear your questions. The objectives are, one, making sure that, that we don't lose people along the way and also really begin to understand what we can do collectively to make sure that we can bounce back stronger than ever. So please stay in touch. Happy to, you know, email, happy to do this individually. Be great to hear more of your stories, just so we get an idea of what's actually happening for people and the various different pieces. So thank you.
And I want to echo Counselor Henderson's remarks. You know, we may not be present, but I'm always checking my emails. I'm always open for a conversation. And I just want to acknowledge that I know a lot of you have been in meetings like this for days, if not weeks. And that constitutes work and labor on your part. And I appreciate the effort that you're putting in to helping us better understand these issues. And, and my ongoing commitment to you to make sure that our arts community continues in this strong, in, with the strength that it had been going before it. So I'll leave it there. And I think we're at 12:30 now.
Thank you, counselor. And thank you to everybody who has contributed through the chat with questions. Thank you to Tim and Amber and Becca for their presentations. A particular thank you to Sandra, who's been doing the ASL interpretation for us. Thank you so much, Sandra. And we, we look forward to continuing these conversations at all levels in the future. You can look for the recording of this available sometime next week, as well as the recording of a parallel meeting that we're going to do on Monday with a, with a different set of stakeholders. So many thanks to all of you for taking the time and effort. And do stay safe and stay well until we meet again.